Our Cable 9 is here videoing the meeting. And we thank them for that, but however, the audience will not appear in the meeting. They will hear a question, but they can't video you because they don't have all the disclaimers they need to have to do. So you don't need to be sitting in the back. They're not going to turn and video you. In any case, we're going to get started here. My name is Sylvia Hannigan, and I'm the Finance Chair for the Council this year. And standing beside me is Scott Schwab, who is our Finance Director in Macedonia. And we are beginning a process, we hope, of communicating with the public about our financial condition in Macedonia. And the opportunity is great because Cable 9 has been kind enough to come to video us. And we have a presentation we're going to give just to level set people. And then we're going to open the floor for questions, concerns, issues, you name it. And so let's get started. We're going to talk about Macedonia finance, what's happening in the total picture of Macedonia finance, the kinds of challenges we're going to be facing this year, next year, and in the following couple of years, and how we're going about managing those challenges. So with that, I'm going to ask Scott to start the process here.
Okay.
And we're going to get to the first slide.
Thank you, Sylvia. As she said, I'm Scott Schwab, Finance Director, and I've been three years now. Actually, celebrated last Friday, three years with City of Macedonia. Previous to that, I was with City of Canal Fulton for almost seven years.
Speak up, Scott.
Yeah, we have some challenges ahead of us. We did have a three-year quarter percent income tax that rolled off beginning this year, and that's going to increase, that's going to decrease our revenue by $1.3 million. So we needed to have this meeting also to prize not only residents, but everyone working in the city, what we're up against as far as major challenges that we're going to face. So the major revenue sources over in Macedonia, how we fund everything, in the last two, from 2007 to 2013, income tax revenues averaged about $7 million. This past year, it averaged about $8 million, the highest collection ever. But a quarter percent of that is dedicated to the REC Center, which means almost a million dollars last year was transferred directly from the general fund, if you want to say that, right to the REC Center that has its own fund. The other major revenue streams are the fire property tax, which was just renewed last year. That one mill brings in $400,000, and that can only be used for fire department personnel and associated costs. The local government tax, it's been cut 50%, but we've normally collected about $225,000 in the last three years. But previous to that, it was up to $400,000. And that was some state cuts that Kasich initiated, and it affected all municipalities. And within two years, they collected over a billion dollars. And that's why the state has balanced their budget by taking that local revenue share from the municipalities and townships. That money is really composed of sales tax, other user fees, even our state income tax that we send down to Columbus. And through a revenue sharing agreement that they did over 80 years ago, believe it or not, to the 1930s, I believe, they were supposed to return so much of that money back to the communities. It goes to the county. The county then looks at a formula based on our population and based on our millage, or I should say, our evaluation of our property, and some other areas that they look at. And then that determines how much that each municipality is supposed to get. The inheritance tax was also cut 100%. And we collected the most I've seen in the last three years here. We collected, I think, $290 last year. Previous years is about $110, so we averaged a little over $200,000. And that has been in effect for 40 years. And that only affected 8% of most estates. You had to have a pretty large-sized dollar amount before that estate tax kicked in. And then a portion of that then went to the county, and a portion also went to the municipalities. But that's just-
So that was your comments here. Let me just make a couple more comments. In terms of the income tax, our median collection has been at about $7 million. However, in '09 and '10, it really dropped significantly. It was closer to $6.3 million and a little bit more. And the reason for this is very simple. We had the big downturn in the economy. The incomes of people went down. And what you're seeing now is that in 2013, we had that extra money coming in due to the fact we had a higher tax rate. But this year, it's going back to the average that has been in for the last decade, which is around $7 million. So truthfully, we are hitting right on the numbers we normally hit in predictable numbers. One other point here, which is, we are operating on, for the city, with the exception of the REC Center, on 1.75% income tax, with some property tax, small, relatively small contribution, and some other state taxes helping us. But our primary operating dollars are coming out of income tax. And the income tax is in fact, about 12% of it's going directly to the REC Center to pay off the REC Center building and to pay for certain aspects of the REC Center operation. So what we've got here is, unlike most of the other cities surrounding us, who are getting 2% tax from their city, this kind of dedicated funds is not in their problem area right now. They are using, they're not using as much for debt. And now we're going to go to the next slide and look at what our debt situation is.
This slide shows the total of all of debt as far as what we have to pay off each year. 2014 is 1.5, and then '15, '16, '17, '18. Have you noticed a significant drop once we hit past '16? That is our REC Center combined 2010 bond, and that is with the safety center, the building and the REC Center that will be paid off. Now, the total amount on that is also 56, 56%, I believe, is actually the REC Center's debt. And the balance, 4244, is actually the general fund. So the general fund is paying roughly out of the million, that's everyone's debt, but out of the REC Center debt, the 2010 series, it's over $1 million. And about $470,000 is actually coming from the general fund, and six something is coming from the REC Center. And that is funded through, the REC Center obviously gets their quarter percent tax, which last year was over $1 million, so they have a surplus. Not only do they pay the debt off, roughly 625, but they have a little bit of surplus that they keep within their fund for operations. And when that rolls off, and the timing of that, well, 2016, we pay the final payment in December. In 2017, the income tax still stays on until July, so they'll have still a little bit of bump to go into operations. They won't have that debt payment to pay.
Okay, so just to be aware, we have committed a lot of money to major infrastructure construction in these two buildings, our current City Hall and the recreation center, and other areas where, like the bridge and Highland Road, we've committed a lot of money that we made a choice to do that versus, let's say, prepare side roads or that kind of thing. So a lot of our money is going into major infrastructure operations, a very significant part of it.
This is just the basic for everyone always says, how much is in general fund? How much is in all funds? Do you have a comment?
No, I just wanted to look at the camera.
Okay, sorry. And what is the general fund? It's a fund used to account for all financial resources that are not restricted for specific purposes. Basically, you can buy, if you want to say that, anything out of the general fund, where other funds that are like the fire levy, 911 wireless levy, those are restricted funds, are specific funds that by mandate, whether by state law or self-imposed law from your own charter or from your own dedication to those funds for debt. And if you go to the next slide on that. So those are examples. Now, we have a fire operating levy, and that's that one-mill levy I spoke about. By law, we cannot spend any dollars out of there for anything, only for fire operations. And that's the manpower, and that's strictly, that's all that comes out of, is their salary, wages, and pension, and the deductions that the county takes from us when they give us this money back because the county collects it. Same as vehicle license tax, can't spend anything on salaries and wages. Pension fund speaks for itself, and the wireless 911 fund, we collect about $19,000 a year, and that money can only be spent for upgrades to dispatch or in those lines. So those funds are a little bit of a misnumber. When someone sees that you have 7 million total funds, well, they're restricted and you just can't move them around by law. So you have to spend the money that it's dedicated for. And here's our historical summary. And as we talked about before, before the economic increase, our beginning balance in 2008 was $936,000, and this was in the general fund. And this was before we had a reserve fund. We have two reserve funds now, emergency funds, and that equals $1 million. And you'll see the increases. Once we started collecting in 2010, it went from $998 to $1,755,000. In '11, we brought it up to $3,254. And again, in '12, we took $500,000 out of that and put it into a retirement fund to help us with our liabilities if we had a lot of people starting to retire. It was just another way to salt away another half a million dollars. So where we're at today, at the end of 2013, we've built up our revenue to $3,278,000, plus we have that $1 million in emergency reserve funds on the side. That's still counted as general fund. Council would have to make a special legislation to take that money out to expend it. And the consensus among the council members this year is, we know we're on an economic downturn. We're going to lose $1.3 million in revenue from our income tax falling off. And the number that they're deciding on is try to get back to maybe the beginning balance in 2013 of $2,513,000.
$13,000.
$2,513,000.
Do you want to-
And the expenditures that we've done, and I think this council, the last three years, managed the money very well. Because not only were they able to build their reserve funds in the general fund to a level that, you know, we knew that was going to, we were going to be having a revenue challenge as we speak now, but they took those other three years, and we averaged $851,000 in capital projects from paving South Bedford, Shepherd Hills, buying new cruisers, new snowplow trucks, $60,000, $70,000 in playground equipment, a duly pickup truck for the fire department, upgrades servers, and some other minor things that may or not have been classified as capital, but they were extra components that would never have been spent had it not came out of capital. Here's just a graph, and it shows you the importance of our general fund, because we don't have dedicated police and fire, other than that one mill for fire. Everything as far as, you know, our safety forces, over 52% of our general fund expenses go to safety forces, fire 1.8. But the real picture fires add that other $400,000 to it. As I said, that 211 fund that we get from the property. So you're talking about a budget of $2.2 million, where the police are at $2.5 million. We have a third of a mill for our pension for police, and that brings in, I think, about just a sly of $100,000, and we spend that only on pension. So the full vote for the police is 2.6, really, but 2.5 come out of the general fund. And again, dispatch is relatively small in comparison, $460,000. But when you lump those three segments together, you get 52%. So everything else is support, whether it's the income tax. Income tax is RITA. That's a straight amount of money that we pay, $229,000 to do what they do from us, from the subpoena program to our collections. And it's primarily based on 3% of what we take in, which, when you compare to other cities, I don't feel that you can really effectively manage income tax and have an in-ground or in-house department of income tax collections and do as good a job as what RITA does for that kind of money. Because not only the personnel, you also have the legacy cost of vacation, you have everything else that goes with it, the pension, and the personnel problems that exist when you try to do anything like that. To me, that was one of the best things that the city ever did, is when they got rid of their in-house, this is my opinion now, when they got rid of their in-house income tax collection and went to RITA. RITA, you know, everyone's going to grumble over once in a while, but they're really responsive to me and to the people that they serve. And some people, you know, they're always going to have something to complain about, but for the most part, they're professionals, and I've enjoyed working with RITA.
And I believe they're the largest income tax collection agency.
Right, there's another one, CCA, that some municipalities use, but RITA's, you know, done well over the years. And 3%, like I said, I've done the math on, you know, this and other municipalities, and you really can't touch them for that. I think it's been a good bargain. And some of the other support staff, from building maintenance or to Mayor's Court. Now, when you look at Mayor's Court and you see $217,000, you begin to wonder, what are we spending on 217? But when you bring in revenue of 450, you're showing a profit of 2 and 1/4. And that 2 and 1/4 pays for all their staffing, all the prosecutor, all the judges. And I like to think of it that the excess money that we got, the revenues over expenses, helps defray the cost of this building. You know, this building's not free, whether you're talking about electric, gas, upkeep, maintenance. And so if that's the fine line that we're bringing in and existing on Mayor's Court and are helping to defray the cost of this building, I think it's a win-win situation. Because even when you talk to the police, having the court here, it serves a deterrent also, they're having their own jail here, and also the fact that our officers are not driving to another location, Stowe or somewhere else, to have to take care of business. You know, everything's settled here. They're not taking two or four hours out to have to appear before on a case. So I think the Mayor's Court's a great addition to the city.
I think the comment I would make is, even the general fund debt payments sit at about 8% of the total, which is a very significant part of that. If you look, it is certainly more than a couple of the smaller departments combined. And that isn't all our debt, of course. As we said earlier, the debt related to the REC Center is in a different fund.
This is just a quick graph. When you think about general fund expenses that we just mentioned, it's like, well, how much are we spending on personnel? And on this case, you look at it, it's 52% on personnel and 48% on operating. And, you know, we're a city, we provide a service, and when you think about it, you know, if you look at the demographics of most cities, you're talking about personnel, and it probably really encompasses 80% of most budgets. And this is just another graph as far as how much we've already committed. As she said, we're committed every year, at least, and that fluctuates depending on how the payout is. But when you go out to bond debt, they look at how much your source of revenue is, and they try to structure it to where, when they know one debt is falling out, then another one might increase it to offset the interest cost. And that's what's happening. When we, our debt now is $713,000 as far as for 2013. But as we roll off that safety center debt in 2016, we have another debt that was done, a bond in 2010, that was a mixture of CIB loans, some fire department equipment, our squad, that cost $253,000. We've been paying $50,000 on that. But the CIB loan that we've been financing and a lot of other street notes, it was rolled into one big bond, and we're paying the debt on that. Now, that bond will increase for the CIB portion of it from $5,000 a year to $180. So some of that savings that we're going to see in 2017, we won't have the REC Center, or we won't have the safety building debt anymore, and we're going to save $470. But CIB loan is also ratcheted up, and we're going to be paying $175. Again, this was just another actual general revenue graph, and you can see, you know, that's some of the poorest problem that we have. We're reliant so heavily on income tax, $7,719, 71% of our total revenue that we bring in. And then the other ones are our real estate taxes, and to some lesser degree, you know, the JED taxes that we share. I think we got $130 in last year, actually. And admission taxes, which is, you know, from the cinemas that we imposed, and some EMS fees. EMS fees, that's none, that's fees that if the squad goes out, they'll bill your insurance company. And it's, if you don't have insurance, it's not something that residents have to pay. They only take what that is. Again, the inheritance tax will fall out. We had the best year ever this year, that 296, 496. The Mayor's Court revenue is still extremely important to us at this point. And again, the total general fund last year was 11,811, and I don't see that happening for a couple of years now. And again, my estimation for 2014 revenue, the big item there is the, RITA's prediction is $6,400. They're saying take 1.3 off the top, so that kind of throws the whole formula to that. And we're going to lose the inheritance taxes, and so everything else starts to look more important when we're getting down to it. And now our proposed budget this year, basically, it's the general fund expense, same thing as what we saw in 2013, with not a whole lot of variations because operations are pretty much the same. The debt payments, pretty close, $749, and all the departments are pretty much operating at the same level. Now, the projected spending in the general fund for '14, that's where we start to get into some issues. Now, the proposed general fund expenses are $10,818. As we looked at that last slide, our estimated revenues are $10,147. So we have a hole in the budget of $670,000. And that's with, you know, actually, that's with a minimum transfer of capital. When we say we're transferring capital, we have capital in what we established a 401 account. 401 doesn't bring in any revenue. 401 has to, the general fund feeds 401 to spend. So it's just a lot cleaner process for the auditors to understand, and for council. Anything 401 is usually booked as capital, and it's easier to discern as far as when you're putting it on the books. So we're looking at a hole here, just in operations in the general fund, $670,000.
And we are, as you can see, the source of funding this year is going to be the carryover of 3.2, which will basically go down to $2.5 million by the end of this year if we spend what we're planning to spend.
And here's some of the other, when we're proposing the 2014 budgets, there's some wants and needs, and some of them are going to have to be paid, can be paid later, and can be moved to the next year. The proposed Route 271 ramp, we got a $500,000 loan. No money's been drawn on that yet, but you could probably figure on, depending on what length of time we have to repay it back, I think $50,000 would be a fair estimate to look at. And the snowplow truck lease, this has been decided, or in the process of being decided by council. We know that's one of the important things, to make sure we have new, good equipment for our street department. It's not cheap. Outfitted truck is about $131,000 apiece. He was asking for three. Council said, you know what, can we do two, get two of the state-of-the-art ones? And hopefully, his trucks are going to last 10 to 12 years. If you go out for a lease for seven years and we do 260, we're looking at about a $45,000 payment. We can start that in 2015, don't put any money down. And the Route 82 Phase 1 widening, that's kind of the resurfacing from the West Corp, from what I understand, to, and that project's not supposed to happen into 2015 anyway, so we won't see any funds drawn down. The safety center roof replacement, that's what this roof was. When we had Hurricane Sandy hit us a year and a half ago or so, we had damage, major damage to REC Center that our insurance liability insurance covered to a tune of over $105,000. So most of the good news is that roof was probably on the stage of getting replaced anyway, so the insurance company helped pay for that. The bad news is, we had minimal damage here, but when the guy went and looked at our roof and said, you know, this is a commercial building, and you guys got 20-year singles on there, and how did that ever go through? And I would highly recommend in the next two years that you start budgeting. And we don't have, this was just kind of a napkin look at it, like, you know what, you're talking about 2 and 1/4 to get this roof done. How accurate that is, I'm not a roofer, but council said, let's put $100,000 aside this year, $100,000 next year into the fund, into the fund. And maybe by the spring breaks in 2015, we'll have a contractor out there before we have another type of worst-case scenario. And there's some other, the wage contracts that were negotiated, there's, basically, it was a 2% increase over, for 2015. And when you factor that in with the resulting pension, we're looking at $103,000. And again, some people might cry and say, you know what, you knew that this was a downturn in the economy, and yet you gave a 2% raise. Well, I'll tell you what, if you've ever been in a union negotiation, if you have $3.2 million in the salt, and then you tell these guys it's going to be a zero, you'd be down in Columbus, we'd be spending $70,000 in attorney fees, we'd have some really contentious things going on. And I think the unions, for the most part, they were fair, they came to the table, they haven't had much raises in the past. They had their comparisons of what other communities do, and you just had to look at it. And I think, I think I helped negotiate the contract with our HR Director, Betsy, and there's five different unions, from the FOP to the Teamsters to the Dispatchers. And they all got that pretty much across the board. And I'm not embarrassed at all to give these guys 2% for what they do. And not only for what they do, but for the fact that, you know, it's a catch-22. We had to salt that money away because we knew the impending crisis was going to happen when we rolled off that income tax. And if you've ever been down in arbitrage, and I have, I've done five or six years of contract negotiations with multiple unions, and it doesn't hold up, and I'll tell you what. And I've seen, I've seen communities in New Franklin spend $70,000 on a fire department issue, that they were, that when it was all settled, it would only cost them 40. The attorney walk away with $70,000. You have then a hostile work environment because they had to prove their point, and it gets nowhere anywhere. This union and these people that I've worked with here, I tell you, they're some of the best employees and department heads that we have, and it-
Let me make an observation here, because when we started out these slides, we said that the typical year, median income tax was $7 million. Then we went into a downturn. We did pass a quarter percent for a temporary boost. We are now back to what would be the medium collection. And if you looked at '07 and '08, and you look forward, there was some discussion at that time that our taxes would be up to between $8 and $9 million. And what you're looking at here is only one year, though. We have had raises, every year, we had a 3% raise across the board in 2012. We've had 2% in 2013, 2% in 2014, 2% in 2015. That's, if you look at the whole thing, there's been over 9% in raises between 2012 and the end of this process, which is 2015. Now, there is another wage opener year, which will be in 2016, which, that's unknown at this point. My point is, it's clear that our residents have recovered to where they were in 2007, 2000, in that range, when they were, they were paying in about $7 million worth. They're still at that point, but these wages are above that point in terms of what you're paying. You're paying 9% more for the operations. That's what you're doing. So I can understand what Scott is saying, and that is absolutely true, that there is a challenge involved in all of this in terms of negotiating out, but our residents haven't caught up to getting 9% raises over what they got in 2007 and 2008. That's the reality. And that's why we have the challenge in front of us.
This was, again, the projected deficit spending. We know that going in, we might be, we got a hole of $670,000 in the general fund deficit. And that previous slide showed 403 in 2015 with the roof repair and all the other items I just spoke of. So when you add those two figures together, you're getting $1,073 for the estimated total general fund spending. That's deficit. But that would bring us down to our general carryover to $1.4 million. And again, if you go into the next year with, you know, some of those items in '15 will roll off as far as the roof, you're not going to spend that $100,000. And if spending is frozen, which I would imagine in '16 for all union negotiations, you're going to have a zero there.
So probably, but-
Again, the summary is that, just to make everyone aware, we are drawing down the general fund carryover that we built up in 2014, 2016. The REC Center and the safety center, the bonds will be paid off, and you'll see the savings from that in the general fund. And that's significant as far as the 475, but again, it was tempered by the decrease in the CIB loan by $150,000 a year.
An increase.
Increase. And so the recreation center, though, that quarter percent rolls off again in July '17, and the income tax will drop, you know, unless something else happens in between that, to 1.75. So there's, you know, there's definitely some funding challenges, and that's all, as far as, we're not spending any more money as far as in capital either. I mean, we've spent $853, like I said previous, in the last three years. And, but now it's kind of, we're paying down the debt, we're obligated to pay down, and we've made these commitments to it. we've made these commitments to it, so obviously those have to come first. We're going to buy some equipment as far as the snowplow trucks, but there's definitely going to be a big belt tightening in the next couple of years.
Right. We, we have a very large obligation in debt, which is capital investment that we committed to a long time ago, and we're continuing to pay. And the flexibility, when we had a major downturn, to, you know, hope, the hope was that we would be able to increase our revenue over a period of time. Obviously, that did not happen. So we have what we have, we're going to have the debt paid down, as you saw on the slide, by the end of two thousand and sixteen. And every town around here, and I've looked at some sample towns, every town around here has basically got a two percent tax, a hundred percent credit. And I am skeptical that we can operate lower than, at one seven, one point seven five percent income tax. So I think we're going to have to be looking at a quarter percent tax that will keep us at two percent. But where that will be distributed, I don't think it can all be distributed to the rec center, that's my opinion, because the rec center was a major cost, which we have now paid off or about to pay off, but there's a lot more to this now. We've got roads to repair, we've got a lot of other things to do. The challenge is managing our way through this, using our carryover properly, keeping the reserve in there, and looking at our whole picture here, our residents are really having to wait for us to do some major road repairs, because we just have all the other road money committed to, and we're, and as Scott said, there's a, the freeway drive exit change, that's going to be fifty thousand a year that we're going to have to be paying annually. So every time that there is a widening or, and there's going to be, actually, there's, eighty-two is being widened at the east end, the west ends, and there is a proposal that we widened it in order to support that exit better, which will be another fifty thousand dollars. So we're building to some more infrastructure costs that are in the range of a hundred thousand dollars additional every year. So with that, we're going to open it up to questions and see who has anything they'd like to say about this, is everybody numbed out or get the picture here? Yes, sir.
Scott, has the law department cost us a half a million dollars in the last two years?
Uh, I think that's a fair assumption. I think two nineteen comes to mind last year, what we paid out.
Yeah, I have a question. We're talking about these abatements all the time when you do businesses. Now, where's the calculation for, I'm sure some of these are becoming due, you know, people have to pay to pull them out? Or the second part of that is, where do we get the support to give these abatements? I mean, are we looking at the budget before we give them, or are we just throwing them out there to get them to come?
Well, in this budget, there's been a hundred thousand dollar budget. Since I've been here in the three years, I've only made, I've only made one payment, and that was to TPC Wire, an amount of forty-five thousand dollars. Now, with their strong financials, and I know they moved some other people in recently to even get a higher number of personnel there, I expect them to cap out another fifty this year, I wouldn't doubt. But those have to be sent to me in approved nine forty-one forms, and actually, you know, there's a process that they have to go through. But, yeah, there, that's a good question. There's definitely some lingering out there, and council can decide based on the budget whether they want to pay it, because that's in the actual contract, so...
But just to be clear, these, these abatements are primarily for income tax for additional employees coming in. So if we didn't have the, like, TPC Wire coming in here, that was an empty building. So we're getting income tax rather than no income tax, basically.
Yeah, well, when a new business comes in, often times, what's the calculus for offering them an abate? Are we looking at our budget, or are we just saying we just need more money? You know, companies that come in and say we want a tax abatement, what would be the criteria?
Well, Scott, what would you like to say about the criteria?
They, they, it's evaluated, the mayor looks at, they do a formal application, legislation is drawn up, and council then acts on it. They, they, a lot of times, the business owner or their associates will come in and discuss what they plan on offering, what they plan on doing. Council will then actually pass that legislation.
Are there plans for raising the income tax again, any sooner than two thousand and seventeen?
None, no, no.
Is council thinking about it, or?
Some people have suggested it, or, you know, Mrs. Tully has suggested that we consider reducing the amount of credit that we're giving the taxpayer for their payments of income tax. But I don't think we have a look at it at that, at that point. We are going to be in a different situation by two thousand and seventeen, and it's a temporary crunch at this point.
Piggybacking on that, I emailed our contact at Rita, Brian Thunberg, and I asked him that same scenario, and the tax rate at two percent, what would happen, how much revenue would be brought in if we took the credit down from the existing hundred percent to seventy-five percent? And he came back with one million one hundred and forty-six thousand additional taxes from individuals only. There's no impact to withholding or net profit taxes. And then again, that same scenario, I asked him, fifty percent, you can almost double it. So fifty percent tax credit, which could be enacted by council, not by a vote from the people, would bring in two million two hundred ninety-three thousand dollars. And again, that impacts individuals only, and there's no impact on withholding or net profits.
When you say individuals only, you need to explain what that means.
Your individual, so if you worked in Cleveland, and I'm sure they're probably two and a quarter, two and a quarter percent, then you would pay the Cleveland tax, and we would only give you fifty percent if it happened to be fifty percent, fifty percent credit based on what you owe here. So just as a scenario, ten thousand dollars in here, you would owe the two hundred dollars. And if you paid, say, whatever you paid somewhere else, say if it was two percent somewhere else, you paid them their two hundred dollars, we only gave you fifty percent credit. So we're only recognizing a hundred dollars, you still owe us another hundred dollars. So really, it's effective, with a fifty percent credit, you're really looking at a three percent tax of who you're paying everybody, and...
As I say, it's been, it's been alluded to, but I don't think we have any consensus towards doing that kind of thing, and certainly not without the vote of the people. Yes.
And the city, that Louis driver hopes to operate at that deficit through two thousand and fourteen, or are there any plans to try to reduce that deficit?
We have, we actually had a request for over two million dollars of items from the departments, and what we're really going to be doing is far less than that. Is there a discussion of taking it down further? There is. It's just a question of what each of the council members will agree on in terms of, what are we going to just be spending money on, and how, how deep do we want to go in terms of pulling that carryover down? At this point, we have one million in a separate reserve, reserve fund, and the carryover is three point two. So we're talking about bringing it down to two point five this year. It could go less if we decide that we're going to tighten up even more. Yes?
Scott, is there been any discussion with the administration regarding fulfilling the promise that the previous administrations had made of building an outdoor pool of rec center?
Not at this time. I would think that would have to be additional revenue coming in to get that pool. I mean, the rumor that I always heard was that once that rolled off, that maybe it would be renewed, the residents would then continue from two thousand and seventeen to do Phase Two or Phase Three, or whatever you want to call it, to make an outdoor pool. But again, that would be up to the council to put that on the ballot and the residents to verify it. Tina?
You know, I had a question about the personnel expenses. Forty-eight percent, is that personnel?
Yes, yes, that's everything. That's hospitalization, that's wages, that's Medicare taxes.
Is there, everybody always makes jokes, maybe unfortunately, about the four guys on the outside of the hole and one guy in the hole. Is there any way to kind of cut the fat off the, the amount of people that, you know, work at City Hall? There just seems like a lot of, a lot of department heads have assistants, and they have assistants, and, you know, you've got five people working less, and, you know, it just seems like an awful lot of, you know, it's a very wonderful job to get if you can get it. Everybody wants to work it for the government, for the City Hall. And is there, I'd just like to know, you know, is there any way, like the legal department, a quarter of a million dollars to, how many lawsuits are we having here?
Well, we're looking at everything in terms of what we're expending in the next few years, including the legal expenses. And so a broader question about the, you know, the number of people and the level of service that people want, you know, we, we need to be looking, I think, longer term at what we are getting for each one of these departments, and what are we investing, and what is the resident receiving as a result of what we've been investing in that department?
Well, I think the service department is doing a very good job. I'm going to give Mr. Dicatano credit for taking care of our streets and stuff, you know, I doubt that was...
Yeah, this has been a tough year for snow.
And it just seems like, once again, you know, I have to live on a budget. I'd like to have somebody come clean my house, but you know what, that ain't happening. So I have to do it myself. So is there, I would really like to see, as Point Councilman told me once, there's a lot of pigs that have to prowl. So I think that statement says, says a lot, of how people think they have to, you know, they don't have million-dollar jobs, and they live on fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year or less. I think if the US of citizens to, you know, pay for things, well, we have to live on a budget, so I would, I hope that you would take that in consideration when you're watching your own hall, your City Hall.
Right. Okay. I think everybody, yeah, yes, sir.
We have roughly ninety-nine seniors that are on the poverty list, and you get the free garbage and free snowplows. And I believe the city set twenty-three thousand for one, twenty-five thousand for two, and twenty-nine for a family of three, okay? There are some seniors that are two or three hundred dollars over that limit, right? And they got to pay for everything.
No, they can come in and have an exception, from what I understand, if they're that close.
All right, but my question is, my figures are about twelve more seniors, if you raise it a thousand dollars, are eligible. Now, how much more out of this budget if you raise it? Why do they have to come in, go to City Hall and get down on their knees to beg? That's a bunch of BS. Why can't you raise that level instead of twenty-three for one, go twenty-four, and so forth?
Well...
How much would it cost you if you had another?
It would be minimum, but every time you raise that level, there's going to be someone else that's affected. So if someone truly is in need, and they're only, whatever, like you say, that close to the line, I don't think it's degrading to come in and state your case. And it could be someone that might be even further over the line, but due to medical prescriptions or something else, I mean, that's what the program's for, to help people out. So I don't think that maybe if this person is even...
Who's going to determine that?
Well, the way the legislation's written and the way the policy is, the mayor makes that determination.
If you don't like you, you don't get it.
Do you know of anyone that didn't get it? I'm not aware of anyone.
I don't, I'm not aware anybody come in and ask you, because I don't believe they should come in and beg when you've got all this money carryover.
It's not, it's not begging, it's a process.
Well...
Tying in a couple of thoughts together, how much commercial vacant property, or in general, how much vacant property and not producing property exists? Is it three percent, five percent, are we above or below averages?
I don't have the answer to that. Billing department would provide that, but, you know, from what I understand, though...
Right, I don't have a number for you tonight, but I could get a number to you.
Because perhaps maybe some marketing, branding, trying to get more, more people into participating.
From, I mean, previous discussion at council meetings, I thought, you know, the commercial side of the available business has been right up to capacity.
Right, all the malls are fairly...
I mean, I, I don't think there's, that's an issue here.
That there's vacant kind, I don't see much.
No, I think it's quite up to the point where, you know, I hate to say, throw out a figure of ninety-eight or whatever, but every time I, everyone I talk to, every discussion I've had with either the mayor or, you know, the billing department, they're always on the positive side.
It's not a short-term solution, but it's...
Sure, no, anything, everything helps on this.
Right. As far as getting additional revenue, obviously, our source of major revenue is income tax, that could change. The property tax is what it is, it's unlike, it's, in fact, I compared it to several other cities in the area. There's generally a two percent income tax. If you look at Twinsburg, if you look at Hudson, if you look at Green, if you look at even little tiny village over here, Glen Willow, you know, they're all operating in the same way with the same amount of heavy reliance on income tax. So what we can do in terms of, of getting people to pay more money in is primarily having more people working and working full-time. Yes?
I have one question about the income tax. You said, because it voted at one point seven five, two percent with the rec center. When the voters passed that, was it under the condition that there would be one hundred percent credit given? Or how did the credit get enacted? You said council could do it by, just eliminate the credit.
Well, that original legislation that you speak of, it gave the credit up to two percent. So there was, you know, there were some people that were not satisfied with that. They were, when the, when the income tax went to two and a quarter from that ballot initiative, in that body of that legislation, it said that we were only going to give you credit to two percent. So people...
I'm not talking about the income tax increase that we prepared, we just went through. Initially, when they raised it to two percent, was it, and the voters voted it to two percent, was it on the condition that a hundred percent credit be provided to people that live in the city and work elsewhere?
No, it still, it still went up to two percent. You could only still have the credit of two percent.
I think he's, he's talking about, not about the temporary tax.
Yeah.
He's talking about when...
Oh, you mean, before that? Yeah, it's always been a hundred percent, from what I understand.
It's always been a hundred percent credit.
So council has the authority to...
Yep.
We do.
They can reduce it to anything. They could just say ninety-five, ninety percent, anything within that limits, council manic action, without the input from the voters. Only, only, council can enact income tax to one percent, up to one percent. Other than that, anything after one percent has to be approved by the voters. That's ORC law. But they can, they have the, the authority to limit how much credit. They can go to zero, they can go to a hundred.
Yes, and the, the fact is that that has never been done here anyway, and certainly with, not without approval of the voters, okay? Because you're affecting everybody's income tax. If you get fifty percent credit, as you heard, you're going to be ending up paying three percent. So people would, in fact, where it has happened, there have been a few towns that this has happened, and generally, the council has been turned out on the street after they tried to reduce this credit. So it's a problem that is probably, you know, it's an interesting idea, but it's not going to happen, that's all. But can we get more money in via income tax? It's even possible this year that the Rita projection is low. I mean, we really don't know for sure. We have another opportunity to look at things in August. That's generally when we relook at things. And if we see that we have, you know, additional income coming in, a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars, then we ought to, then we have to make the choice. My own opinion would be that we keep it in carryover, because next year is even going to be a bigger challenge. It's going to be a very big challenge to make it through there. And once we get into two thousand and sixteen, and we roll off this other debt, then we're going to have to look at exactly how much can we operate with, most of the towns around here, as I say, are operating with a two percent income tax, period, across the board. Yes, sir?
Based on that, are we tracking in any way, shape, or form development as far as single homes? Are we seeing any kind of, have our home building kind of flatlined, or are we still kind of increasing?
No, it's been increasing.
And how is that in comparison with foreclosures? Have we kind of stopped the bleeding with foreclosures over the past few years?
I saw a real estate ad just the other day where it said Macedonia house is sold in thirty days. So I think the market's strong for Macedonia, and obviously, if a house gets on the market and it's gone thirty days, you either undersold it, or there's a pent-up demand for it. And I know we have a lot of quality builders here, because I see the escrow accounts that come in every month, and there's definitely been a lot of activity last year. And of course, at this time of year, you know, with the weather, it's subsided, but no, our, our market is strong, and there's been a lot of building going on. So that's going to help the bottom line also.
Well, I have been told, and let me just temper that a little bit, because I did have talked to some real estate people who are, who operate in Macedonia and other areas around here. And they tell me that the market is very strong in some parts of the city and not so strong in other parts of the city. So it's not a purely nice market at this point. It's like a lot of places, we do still have foreclosures, we still have homes that are vacant. I... I mean, that's, that's the truth. It's less than it was a year ago, but it's still a significant problem. And one of the things we're supposed to be doing is clearly, we wanna make sure that any of these homes are properly maintained by the banks, 'cause that's usually who's got these homes and the lawns mowed and all of that. Because people who live near these homes, you will hear a lot of complaints that the banks are not taking care of these things, that we need to be following up.
We have a noxious weed ordinance that they'll come in and they'll mow it, and then they put it on their tax assessment in the fall. So, you know, billing department's in charge of that, and I think they...
Yes, well, they're, they're doing, you know, they are in charge of it. There have been some issues, but things have improved in the last year. So, you know, my own thought on our, our situation with regard to the demand for homes in this, this area, we are, we are a desirable area to live in, with the exception of the last month and a half with this weather. I was so sick of this. Generally, we are a desirable area to live in. Let me make another couple of points here. We have been, we have some folks coming in. There's, there's gonna be apartment homes and a, an assisted living center over near where the Girl Scouts are. So, there will be some additional income tax coming in from that when those are built. Probably won't be, started to be built until next year. But some of them could be started this year, but the actual employment of people probably won't be till next year. The other thing is, there are hospices that have come in here to look at the property where that has been rezoned B1 on Valley View here. So, it is possible we'll have additional people employed in those areas. So, there isn't, it isn't totally a black eye.
Before, again, I wanted to thank the two of you for doing this. This is really informative and helpful. If I was ever not, I would say, hey, this is a whole class in a half an hour.
Yeah.
So, let's do more of this. This is great.
No, I wanna thank everyone for coming out. It's a good turnout, and everyone here has a vested interest in Macedonia, just to make sure for their own personal view of how the money's being spent and managed. And, you know, if you're taking time out of your life and other activities to come here, it shows there's a definitely, you know, you have a soft heart for the city and you wanna make sure that everything is done properly. It's been a good exercise for me, because I've been wanting to do a popular report, which is just basically an overview and audit for someone that can basically have this type of information and provide it to them, with someone wants to say, you know, what is, how many people do we staff on the police or fire department, and what is our capita per person, or how much is our charge? So, we're gonna take this information and condense it into a more easy, readable format, and it's, and it's, it's something that someone can relate to as far as if they have questions about revenue or expenses or anything that comes there. It's a starting point of discussion towards, so...
Yeah, we...
Does a citizen bring to you an idea? For example, I wanna dog park.
I love, I love that idea. I've talked...
Twenty-eight years, I can't get a pass, anybody, neither listen.
I love that idea. I talked to you, I talked to you before about it, probably a year ago, and I thought it was a great idea.
Do dog parks, do the dogs pay revenue to, do we get income tax from these dogs?
I've been once in my yard, my dog barked, travels past my fence. Amazingly enough, three times last year and only one time this year so far, the police came to my house to tell me to stop my dog from barking.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Oh, the little...
I had a little dog bark, I could go to once a while. Maybe I'll bark at the year of the squirrel in my neighborhood.
Well, getting, getting...
I think about buying out my neighbor, and I would have my own dog.
Getting back to financial issues, rather than dogs. But I, I understand it, I really appreciate it, and I had a...
Where do you begin when no one listens?
Well, we're gonna listen, bring it to the council. I'd be willing to listen to that. In fact, we had a beagle for many, many years while my kids were growing up, and I, he would have loved to go to a dog park, I'm telling you. Of course, he would be marching everybody into a corner and barking at them.
The land is free, we don't have to...
That's right. Is it anybody... Yes, sure. Yes, go ahead.
I have a question. I know that the mayor indicates that there's a lot of interest in businesses moving into the community. He says he gets inquiries...
Yes.
All, all the time. I'm sure, I'm sure he does. But of the ones that he's had, are there any, you mentioned hospice, and we know about the one going out by the Girl Scouts. Are there any others of major proportion that are really looking at us seriously, that, you know, maybe we're looking at a year or two down the road and just would start impacting our income here?
Well, there, other than the ones that we've already mentioned?
Yeah.
There's not been very much, has it been anything mentioned to you? No. And what I'm taking from all this, we have a limited amount of green space. That's a limitation in Macedonia as opposed to areas of like Twinsburg where they have a tremendous amount. One of the more desirable kinds of things to attract here is something like Cleveland Clinic has, has done over in Twinsburg. But where we would place such an activity, we have, we have some industrial areas that maybe could be rehabilitated, that aren't being utilized right now, but it's extremely weak in terms of attracting a facility or an amenity like that. Yes.
One more question.
One more?
The golf course. When is that contract gonna be renegotiated?
I believe it's up in 2017.
We are paying $1,000 a month for renting our property.
I believe the contract is up in 2017.
2017? How much money are we making off that golf course? Which could have been a very nice community center for seniors.
Do you remember what they were paying? Thirty-two thousand a year? They're supposed to be paying the property tax.
They're paying, they were paying around 34 for the property tax, and they started at around 1,000, and then it's escalating annually up to, it was something like 2,000 a month. But the problem is this, you know, we leased it out, we have a business in there, and our problem is, we need to have looked at that, I think, from the beginning. I had a different opinion at the time. I thought we should just look at the optional ways to utilize that facility, because the golf course itself is not being used. It has not been used since it was built, because it doesn't fit in with what the golfers wanna do, I gather, which is these very short holes that are in the two-club hole range. They'd rather go to some of these golf courses around here. They're willing to use the driving range. They, in fact, there's a putting green inside, as I understand it. They put it in the basement of that building now. They have a huge putting green, and you can do indoor putting and practice in there. But the only things, that and the driving range are what is really, you know, creating any income for them. And that and the fact that they, they have basically a golf store with lots of golf clubs and fittings and all that stuff. So, they do have that, and that's making them some money. But if there were not a commercial activity in there, we wouldn't have to pay any property taxes. And as you may or may not know, we, the previous owners, Two Club, which went bankrupt, had not paid their property tax. So, we're still in tax court trying to determine whether we, how much we owe, and there, this has been going on for a very long time. And it's, the last thing we were told is sometime perhaps in 2016, there would be a determination by the tax court of how much we owe and what the negotiated settlement would be. It's around 300,000 right now that's sitting on the property tax rolls for that facility that has not been paid.
Well, who's paying the property taxes that's for the company that's there now?
They are providing what's called a payment in lieu of taxes to us, and what are we doing with this? We're squirreling...
We're putting it in a, we're putting it in a fund for the outcome.
Is that enough to pay the taxes that are due?
Close, it won't be perfect.
I don't know, that just didn't sound like good business to...
Well, we have, we have a negotiated agreement that is going to be up for renewal, as he said, in 2017. And that's really a challenge that we need to be looking at in that timeframe.
Thank you.
Yes.
My question has to do with the healthcare benefits.
The healthcare benefits?
Yeah. Our company, last year saw an increase of nine to 12% in healthcare, and this year went to 15 to 34%.
I see.
What, what have you seen and what do you anticipate this being?
Let me tell what the question is. Let me repeat the question. This gentleman wants to know about healthcare benefits and what has been the cost picture for the city in terms of, they have had a lot of increases that, he works for a private business, and a lot of people have seen those increases as Obamacare has come in. So, what have we seen? I know we've got some good news story there.
Yeah, we, we were extremely lucky. Our, my predecessor, Lauren, joined what they called BORMA, which was a consortium of municipalities that were basically self-insured. It was a pool, it was a group insurance pool for hospitalization. He, at that time, he, they were threatened with big rates, and that's why he made the jump. And we had a three-and-a-half-year commitment with BORMA at the time, and we, we enjoyed extremely low rates comparable because, with the healthcare market exploding. At the end, BORMA started to operate badly, as far as there was a lot of claims coming in, and they were underfunded with this whole group of people. And we had the exit strategy that we were gonna leave the pool, which we were one of the first, and this just happened this year. So, we went and shopped out to Summit County, because we, we suspected and were later found out that they were gonna increase our rates. They set a minimum of 25% at the last. They were holding off their, their rate increase renewals to tell everyone, because they did not want us to shop. We knew there was something up, me and the HR director, 'cause we were attending these meetings and we saw the financials. So, we were looking to exit, because we had that ability to do that, and we, we were not comfortable staying. We were anticipating huge increases, but they would not let us know how much. So, we were shopping before our deadline to exit. And then when we finally went to the one meeting and they still weren't firm, they were warning everybody, look for 25% rate increases. 25% rate increases for us would have been 350,000 dollars a year. So, add that on to that, and you would see, you know, another bad scenario. We were able to go with the county. We looked at three different groups, some were even a, a school type of funding program that would have led us in there, 'cause we've got good claims experience, luckily, compared to other places. And BORMA wanted to keep us because of that. And so, anyway, long story short, we were able to get out of BORMA, get into the Summit County pool, have actual reduction in our premiums this year. They went into another fitness program that we incorporated with the same premium wellness program, which is gonna benefit the city employees in the long run by tracking how many steps they do, whether they're getting checkups, all these different things that they track for us. So, we're in a better spot. We've got a three-year commit with, with them, and quite frankly, we lucked out again. BORMA helped us out four years ago when Lauren took that jump, and we, and because we left that pool. Now, BORMA's experienced difficulties, and from what I understand, they might be on the verge of bankrupt now. I wish them well, but I'm glad we're gone. And we really, you know, made a great decision for the city to leave there. And it was a seamless decision, in a way, because the same provider is, Medical Mutual is still, was BORMA's actual provider also. So, we're dealing with a lot of the same personnel and everything else, so...
Maybe, one of the things that I, that I think maybe would be of help to people who are watching or listening here, you could explain how the wellness program affects people in, inside of it, you know, how much reimbursement, how much of the total cost of health insurance are we paying for individuals and families, and how does the wellness program fit into that?
Well, the wellness program, it's basically mandatory, and if you don't hit these goals from, at the end of the year, your premium will go up 5%. So, it's an incentive for employees to actually, if, if your wife's on the plan too, she doesn't have to participate, but you're gonna get less points. And A, you're either gonna work harder to get to that level, or she needs to help you out to get to that level. So, it's, it envelops a lot of different wellness clinics that's gonna be sponsored here, you know, whether you get your arteries checked, or your sugar checked, or different things like that, or actually track your fitness. You know, you buy my $99 fitness band and tracks how many steps I make, and gives you so many goals to make, and, and I, it's exciting, 'cause there's a lot of people I know in the city that's participating, and, and I think it's gonna be a good benefit for the long-term use of our health insurance to get the rates down, start trying to manage our healthcare.
What is the employees' portion that they pay versus what the city pays for coverage for single and then coverage for...
The premium itself?
Yeah, the premium.
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, I, it's somewhere in the 5% range for the single and 10% for the...
That's probably correct.
Okay. Yes.
Instead of, instead of spending all that money on that 271, the new ramp we're gonna put in, I made the suggestion, I'm glad some of the residents are here, put a going east, stop here on red, do not block intersection. People coming east to make the left turn in there, if that's done. Who's getting all the money from this, where it costs about 200 dollars to put two signs up and labor versus the veins, we're gonna spend widening the bridge and everything? Why hasn't somebody looked into that, instead of spending all this money for that 271 ramp?
I don't know, it's out of my purveyor of work. I'm not...
No, I only use not going up...
I'm not an engineer, yeah.
Because like I said before, anytime you spend all that money, somebody in the administration is gonna get some benefits out of it, no offense. I'm not referring to you.
I haven't seen any benefits.
The benefits are minimal, so...
Has your budget been finalized for this year?
No.
No, we're gonna be doing that, though, and we have a meeting scheduled for March count, and we're really gonna be going down, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no. And, you know, whether we're gonna, you know, we're gonna pay for this, or we're not, we're gonna not pay for this. And as far as the ramp is concerned, they had a public involvement meeting here in this room, and the people from the, how Department of Transportation talked to us, and I don't remember if you were here or not.
I don't know if you talked to them.
And the argument that I heard was that we needed to move the exit, because it was the, the traffic flow coming out of the shopping centers was very messed up, especially when we have high-traffic area, times and parts of the year. And that it was a safer option to go down to the freeway drive. I don't know if you saw any studies. I did, I did look at all the studies. I did not see any safety studies there. I just saw traffic flow studies.
Can I ask you a question, Sylvia, on the council? By the time they do that ramp, if council approved installing those two signs going east, stop here on red, do not block intersection. So, if the light turns red, people are stopping before they take those things out, people can make the left turn on 271.
Right.
If that didn't work out, you just blew 1,500 dollars for the signs, then spend that half a million dollars. Why haven't they considered that?
I don't believe that the administration has ever considered that, you know, option of opening the ramp up now. And I don't know if this is a political issue or not. It's certainly, the question that has been raised over and over is how safe is the left turn? And I have seen no studies that say that it's more unsafe than Shepherd Road or anything else. Maybe you have seen something, but I haven't. So, we're basically down to, this is a recommendation of ODOT, and the decision by the administration is they will not open that turn, and they will not put in those signs.
On that topic, Sylvia, the ramp that will be vacated is a valuable piece of commercial property at that point. What happens in the ownership and then how does that process work?
Who owns that property at this point?
City should own it, it's an easement to the state. No, I mean, it might be...
Well, we need to, that issue has come up as to who owns it? And I, you know, adjacent property owners may in fact own some of that property. We, I don't know the answer, but that's something we can find out. Who actually owns it?
I would think that the state would own it, or if they'd bought an easement from the existing one. So, I would think, you know, I would think the state have to have...
We're buying, the city's buying the property for the new ramp, so just in that frame of thought, who owns the other ramp?
Yes, we, we're actually, the new ramp, we're, the only thing we're doing is, we are buying property to expand freeway drive, you know, increase the width of freeway drive property to expand freeway drive, you know, increase the width of freeway drive on both sides, you know. So we're buying property from the Blue Willow and from Dogs or Tails or Wagon and the property on the corner. However, the rest of that is being managed and bought by, and of course, we're buying the, where the current Chamber of Commerce is, you know, to be able to work through there. The rest of that process is being paid for by the ODOT project to expand 271 to three lanes. So our portion of it is relatively small compared to theirs. However, it's extremely expensive for us, obviously, half a million. Plus, we're probably going to have to expand 82 in order to make that left turn efficient at freeway drive. So we're going to add, if we add another lane, that's going to be another $50,000 a year or basically $500,000.
I thought that was part of the state plan, to add a lane each direction under the
We are, what we're talking about here is if we, the way that we are expanding freeway drive so that we can accept the exits, they're going to add a lane so you can make a left turn. What we're talking about is, ODOT is asking that we also pay to expand by buying property to expand 82 where it will feed onto freeway and make a left turn. So the stuff along 82 is what they're talking about. That has not currently been agreed to by Macedonia yet. But their recommendation from ODOT is that our traffic flow would be much better if we have an additional lane. And it's probably true that it would be. But whether we decide we're going to do that, that's expensive. It's another half a million dollars. Yes?
Continuing on the intersection. Is the city controlling a little bit on how this road is going to be widened at that intersection for turning? Because I'm presuming that once that ramp becomes operable, we're going to see an increase in semi-traffic trying to gain access to northbound 71.
I see.
And my concern is that's also the same intersection that our bus traffic is going to be coming through during certain times of the day for schools.
Okay.
And, you know, we, I don't know how this is going to map out, but I do see increased semi-traffic and the possibility of school buses in an intersection here. You know, I was wondering if there's any kind of planning to give the space possibly needed for semi trucks to like show up again or just through.
Just to repeat what Mr. Savo is asking, he's talking about the left turn onto freeway when the new exit is open and you have additional semis that are interested in going northbound on 271. They're coming down 82, both directions are you talking about? There was a traffic study and I looked through it and I didn't, the only thing that was in the traffic study that I saw was the number of people who were cutting through Speedway. So I don't know that that issue has been considered. We could ask ODOT about that, though I think we should. Do we have any?
Just have one last question.
One last question?
The chart that we have here that talks about what the various wages are in the departments. I noticed that the law department is averaging about $71,000 for 2010, 11, 12, and 13. However, I understood that the law department was getting a retainer, pension, city wage, as well as billable. So if they're getting paid for different ways, how come it only shows $7,000 here?
Yeah, okay, because the, he's showing the law department in two different departments, you know, the layers court and this, and that's why that particular chart I think is a little confusing. The total amount of law department expenses in 2013 was $265,577. And the, the amount of, and I'm just looking at our chart here. And if we, if we look at that, there is, at this point, there's two different, there's essentially three different kinds of reimbursements, retainer pension and billable legal fees. And so the total amount in that area is basically, Scott, if we look, we have to add these two and then add this.
That's $156,000.
It's $156,000, right.
So it's making you look in this chart that the finance department is getting $100,000 a year more than the law department, which isn't true. It shows the service department wages at only $162,000, police department at 1.4 or one and a half million. But our law department costs us more than $70,000 a year.
Which chart are you looking at?
2010.
Oh, I see. Those are the backup, that's why I was confused.
So in other words, anybody that has would think that we're at our law department.
And we'll see if we have an error in the chart here. Hold on.
Are you looking at the last page then? That's just, that's the wages. That doesn't show the contract labor. That doesn't show this pension in there. That's straight wages that was reported at Bureau Workers' Comp.
For one law department person or assistant or?
That would be for, that would be for his two, that would be for the two people in the actual Beamer Associates.
The Beamer Associates.
Seventy-two, seventy-two thousand, four sixty, it would have been.
That's only wages.
On their W2s, not, not the.
$199.
Co-existing, eight thousand, six eighty would have been pension, that's how much the city would.
Lots of billable fees.
Yeah.
Now, have we been paying that law director a pension for 25 years or just?
I can't answer 25 years, but if that's how you set up as a retainer, that's what it's normally done.
So it's not in a contract between the mayor and the law department?
I don't know of a contract. I just know from the budgetary portion of it that the retainer's in there and that's how it's paid. It's paid as.
Is he always going to be the law director forever?
I don't, I can't answer that.
Well, those are, those are additional questions. Yeah, so this is accurate, but it's only showing the wage component of this, not the, not the billable fees and so forth. Anybody have any other questions here? This has been a fun kind of meeting and.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
I appreciate you all coming and we are adjourned here. I appreciate you all coming and we are adjourned here.